Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on Tuesday, June 6th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. The Planning Board is convening this meeting by video conference using the Zoom application. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. I'd like to welcome everyone attending this meeting and take attendance of members and staff. I chair, Linda Miller, present. Vice Chair, Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Clerk Sue Felchin.
I don't believe she's... Oh, there she is.
Sue, can you acknowledge that you're present?
Present.
Thank you. Rob Almeida.
Present.
Abby Flanagan, our newest member as of yesterday, is not going to be available this evening. And Mark Giddings. Also, our town planner, Elizabeth Hughes.
Present.
And Administrative Assistant Heather Carey.
Also present.
Thank you. I'd like especially to thank Elizabeth for her persistence and sacrifice for the Planning Board this week. Last weekend, she broke her leg, as some of you might not know. Yet she still managed to move this agenda and many other town projects forward. So thank you, Elizabeth. Above and beyond, which is sadly what we've come to expect of you, I think. But thank you.
Well, don't mind the grimaces. It's just I'm moving my foot around, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. This year, I'd like to work to improve our time efficiency at the Planning Board meetings. For this reason, we are going to try some slight changes in format, and I welcome your feedback. Our goal is to respect the time of staff, volunteers, applicants and their experts, and citizens in what can be a long and detailed degree of discussions. Each vote will be conducted by roll call. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement or ask a question during public participation period should use the Zoom raised hand function or star nine on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use star six from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address, and any relevant affiliations, and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments and statements made during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities, and are requested to be respectful. You will be given a reminder 15 seconds before your time has elapsed. Answers to questions that require detailed discussions will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The Board welcomes written comments or questions at any time instead of or in addition to those comments made during public participation. Written materials for this meeting are posted on the Planning Board section of the town's website. With that said, we will now go to the first agenda item. This will be the recommendation to the zoning board of approval for the Elaine v. Cody Revocable Trust for a special permit under zoning bylaws Sections 7.2 and 11.6 to construct an addition which requires 59 cubic feet of fill and 97 cubic feet of compensatory flood storage within the Flood Plane Conservancy District at 300 Ministerial Drive, parcel number 2803 and 2802. Would the applicant or anyone here representing them like to provide an overview or statement or answer questions? If so, let us know who you are. In lieu of not having an applicant, Elizabeth.
I'd be happy to go over the project for the Board.
That would be excellent. Thank you so much. And if anyone joins us in the meanwhile, we'll try and include them in.
Okay, give me one second.
Certainly.
Okay. So this is Ministerial Drive is here. Tarbell Spring Road is at the bottom. About 200 feet north is Harrington Ave. So I don't know if that orientates everybody sufficiently. I do need to just expand. There we go. The existing dwelling is right here with an existing deck. The applicant is proposing to demolish this deck and build a new deck. And this is the addition is this dark outline that goes around the back in this manner. The 100-year floodplain. It's kind of hard to see, so I apologize, but it's roughly this squiggly line right here. So this air is corner of the proposed addition is within the 100-year floodplain. There's a stream that runs basically the back of this property and a little bit here. So almost the entire, this entire lot. This is the 100-year buffer right here. So almost the whole entire lot is within 100, the 100-year buffer. And then only this area is outside of the 100-year floodplain. So for the property owner to do an addition, you know, they're they're gonna fill in this area and then provide compensatory storage up in this area. So as Linda stated, they're proposing 59 cubic feet of fill and 97 cubic feet of compensatory storage, which is more than the 1.5 to 1 requirement. The Natural Resources Commission issued an order of conditions at the end of April.
Okay. Do any Planning Board members have any questions or comments?
I would add the Engineering Division has reviewed the plans and all of the calculations and does not have any issues and concerns. They did recommend they did recommend a couple of conditions in their letter. Which give me which I captured one in the planner's report that was sent to you this afternoon. I did not capture their other condition had to do with the applicant getting a right-of-way permit for the revised driveway location. So in the planner's report, I recommended two conditions that I can share with you if that would be helpful. The first condition deals with a as-built plan that verifies the floodplain compensatory storage. The second condition is because they are altering the 100-year floodplain boundary, they are required to go through FEMA to get a letter of map amendment. So the third condition would be the standard condition regarding getting a right-of-way permit for the revised driveway.
Okay. If there are no comments from the Board, are there any comments from the public? Seeing no raised hands, I think we could look for a motion.
I move that.
Oh. Elizabeth, you're gonna put that up or?
Yeah. Oh, I have it right here. I move that the Planning Board recommend, give a favorable recommendation for to Elizabeth V. Cody Revocable Trust for a special permit under zoning bylaw Sections 7.2 and 11.6 to construct an addition, which requires 59 cubic feet of fill and 97 cubic feet of compensatory flood storage within the Flood Plane Conservatory District at 300 Ministerial Drive, parcel number 2803 and 2802.
With the conditions.
With the conditions discussed at the Planning Board meeting of June 6th, 2023. Thank you, Elizabeth.
A second.
A second? Oh, thank you. Okay, well, for our roll call vote, we'll start with Rob Almeida.
Yeah.
Andrew Boardman.
Yes.
Sue Felchin.
I.
Mark Giddings. Mark, did you say yes?
Yes, she said yes.
Oh, thank you. And I, Linda Miller, yes. The vote is approval five in favor and so declared. Next, we will move to administrative business. We've moved the public comment ahead of other administrative items on the agenda so that citizens don't have to wait through all of the administrative discussions until they can provide public comment. However, this comment section will be limited to items that are not on the agenda. There will be an opportunity for comments on each administrative item at the end of discussion by the Board on that particular section. Again, public comment is limited up to 15 minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to anyone's speaker. Heather will be kind enough to remind speakers when 15 seconds remain on the clock. Would any members of the comment of the public wish to comment publicly on anything today? Well, seeing no hands, we will go on to our next agenda item, which would be the MBTA Communities Outreach Discussion, June 7th Housing Roundtable and June 28th Public Information Session. Elizabeth, would you like to lead this discussion as well?
Sure. Thank you very much. So tomorrow evening is the Housing Roundtable, which will include the Concord Housing Authority, the Concord Housing Development Corporation, the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, and the Concord Housing Foundation, along with the Select Board, Planning Board, and Community Preservation Committee. Trying to remember who else. There were, a lot of people have been invited. But the focus of tomorrow night's meeting is our Community Engagement Specialist with the Citizens Housing and Planning Association will be doing a presentation on community engagement around the MBTA Communities' requirement. The, you know, the purpose community engagement, why it's important to have community engagement to move this along. And then Erin Stevens, our senior planner, will go through the we've taken the outline of the community engagement plan that the Select Board and the Planning Board saw last month and started basically refining and populating that outreach plan with very, you know, specific tasks, you know, such as, you know, getting information out into church newsletters, which would take, you know, a church member to do that, handing out flyers at the grocery store or, you know, just all the very specific details, and she'll be going through that. And what we're hoping is that people will basically sign up to take on one of those tasks and become that, you know, community advocate and from a really citizen's grassroots effort, really try and get the participation and the information out there as we, you know, we move forward with developing, you know, a zoning and a district that meets the requirements and promotes, you know, different housing options. So that will be the focus for tomorrow night.
I have a question. I mean, and I sort of wonder, is this putting the cart before the horse? That is, if people aren't yet educated really to what the MBTA Communities Act is about, and we really haven't defined what it will look like, how, you know, won't it be difficult to get people on board for it? I mean, or do we have part of the presentation which is telling people why this is or can be advantageous to the community?
So the focus tomorrow night really is is taking that outreach plan and the people that are gonna be there tomorrow night are, have already been involved in the MBTA Communities' discussion and have had conversations about it and have an understanding of it. So tomorrow night, we'll be focusing on getting those community advocates so that when we launch the public engagement side of this, June 28th, that from tomorrow night, those community advocates, citizen advocates can go out and, you know, spread the word about the June 28th event and start that, you know, process of, you know, making sure that everybody, you know, is, gets informed and can come to those meetings. So the the focus tomorrow night is those people attending from those different housing groups and and, you know, like the Planning Board have already, you know, been involved in this discussion and have a basic understanding of the requirements. So tomorrow night is really gonna be focused on how do we make sure that the whole entire community is involved and aware of what's going on as this moves forward?
Are there other questions, thoughts, discussion from other Board members? And so what do you envision our role tomorrow evening?
I, I think, you know, as far as, you know, the Planning Board, so the June 28th event, I see the Planning Board being, you know, like the key sponsor of that event. You know, we will have our community at that event on June 28th. We will have our Community Engagement Specialist will be doing that presentation on, you know, a little bit about what zoning is and, you know, and can, cannot do. And then about that's that 101 session where, you know, people can come and learn about the law and the requirements and, you know, the facts about what it, you know, what it is supposed to, you know, be doing and accomplishing. And that will be the June 28th event for the public to to learn the everything about this that, you know, this Board has already been, you know, going over, you know, for the past year. So that will be the June 28th event. So I think the Planning Board will be taking, you know, just a key lead in those different public forums and workshops. But, and then, you know, if certain members wanna, you know, take on a specific community engagement task, whether it's, you know, I'll, yeah, I'll go speak to, you know, the, the person who does the newsletter at my church and see if we can get just a little sentence in there to. So I, I see the members of the Planning Board, you know, just being one of, you know, the citizen, you know, advocates to get the information out.
And will we have a chance to review the presentation that's going to be made on the 28th?
If, if you wish, sure. I mean, our Community Engagement Specialists, you know, had given this presentation in quite a few communities already, but definitely, I mean, I don't see any issue with that.
So we could either see a video of what they presented somewhere else. I mean, I guess I perhaps I have recollections of the Theroade Depot and, and sort of a sense that the community likes to see that things are done the Concord way. And that a consultant just doesn't quite have the standing as maybe they might deserve.
Right. So the meeting on the 28th won't be anything Concord-specific. It will just be about the section, you know, 3A, the law, and the requirements that are outlined in the guidelines. So it really will just be a public information session for people to understand the, the law and the requirements. So it won't be Concord-specific.
Okay. Yeah. And do we have, do we have a timeline for, you know, sort of between now and I guess, sort of January, when we have a timeline so, you know, we can make sure that we'll get, get our zoning amendment on town meeting if possible. I mean, sort of how, how between June 28th and January, where where does that get sketched out?
So the outreach plan that the Board looked at last month did have a, you know, a rough outline on, on months, on when things would happen. And then, and, and I can send it to the Board again. In January, we submitted our action plan to the state for approval, which the Board received way back in January. So I'll send it again, but that laid out a rough timeline of specific dates on, on when things had to happen in order for a warrant article to be submitted in the beginning of January. So I can send that out again to the Board.
Great. Great.
So we are also getting ready to finalize an actual dedicated webpage. And we think we are going to be able to have on, right on the homepage and right in the, right smack in the center, a dedicated radial button that people can just tap and go directly to the, the dedicated webpage. So all this information that's gonna be put out there will be put on that page, including, you know, like the approved action plan. So, but I will send that again.
Great.
Elizabeth, I have a couple of questions. One of them is for the public forum on the 28th, is there a plan, ouch, your poor leg. Is there a plan for getting something into the Concord Bridge in time for their publication deadlines to publicize that forum? Okay, very good.
So hopefully, we're gonna get something. We just finalized where we were able to get the Harvey Wheeler Community Center. Because if we couldn't get both the auditorium and the clock tower room, you know, we have, we have no idea how many people are gonna show up. So, so we just got that confirmation yesterday. So we're gonna, you know, start putting something, you know, in the bridge, hopefully weekly. And one of the reporters reached out to me about doing an article. So so I will coordinate with Linda on speaking with that reporter so we can get something going in the bridge.
And my other question was, I was looking over the Housing Production Plan Implementation Leads document that you sent out for this meeting. And I noticed that item number 19 is one of the ones where the Planning Board is checked off as being assigned as one of the groups to be involved in that item. And it is sewer transit infrastructure and all the other things where the Planning Board is listed. I, it was entirely clear to me why the Planning Board was listed for those items. But I was less sure about what the Planning Board's input would be on sewer transit and infrastructure. And I don't need an answer about that tonight. It just occurred to me to wonder, and I thought I should bring it up at some point, and why not now?
I think it has a tenuous link with the MBTA because it's transit and
No, no, no. I understand why transit matters. It's just that this chart has all the
Yes.
large list of organizations that Elizabeth remembered and each thing that they might be involved in and why the Planning Board on these. Maybe it's a thing to, to explain better at some future dates, since there's certainly no rush on that.
Okay. I will find out.
Yeah, I, you know, or tomorrow night, if well, like, it's, it's hard to ask, but you might consult Keith Bergman, because that's his chart, and maybe, maybe we I, I agree, maybe we don't really play a major role in terms of sewer infrastructure.
Well, he may have had a very good reason, but it wasn't clear to me just from reading the checkbox. That's all.
Yeah. Any other comments, thoughts for Elizabeth? If not, thank you for being there on item number two. And then the next item, oh, I should ask if there's any public. Did I ask if there's any public? Yes. Mary Hartman, see if we can.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
I've got a question about the, the June 28th forum that we're planning or you're planning. I heard that it's a basically an information out to the community as far as the law. But is there gonna be an opportunity at that meeting to listen to people's reaction? Because people are already starting to react. And I think you've got to have some time for that. And I'm wondering, is that part, I heard that it was a a going outward type of communication session. Is there gonna be time for community input? That's one of my comments. My second comment is I wonder if we're reaching out. I know we've got a consultant at the state level that's helping us with this outreach. But I'm wondering, are we reaching out to other people at the state level like? I'm wondering, are we reaching out to other people at the state level like Andrea Campbell or Kim Driscoll? Because I know that they're very active, so at some point in this PR campaign, I think they would be very helpful, and they've offered to help. Um, I don't know who should do that, whether it's you or whether it's the select board, but that's something we should coordinate. And then, um, the other comment I have is that, um, at the June twenty eighth, you might want to consider um, redoing the map that was presented at both the select board and the um, planning board meeting that um, had the radius around the train stations, and you might want to think about um, redoing that map so that it doesn't highlight it doesn't like target places that aren't necessarily targets, and I think, I think you know what I mean. Do you?
I think you mean to draw it out with the half mile radius and ha- around each train station and have it simply be that, the half mile radius and nothing else.
Or maybe you could highlight places that aren't eligible, but to highlight places are gonna, we, we already saw that it, it quite understandably upsets people, and so, um, we might wanna um, learn from that.
Thank you very much, Mary, for your comment. Do you have um, any additional comments?
No, I'm done, thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, any additional comments from the public? This may be the only meeting where we have one comment on MBTA this year, so enjoy. Okay, now on to um, the next agenda item is the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Planning Board Goals and Project Discussion. Again, Elizabeth, um, would you like to lead us through that?
So, um, apologize that, again, got this out to the board this afternoon, but uh, so annually, the board goes through their list of um, goals and projects for um, the what was on last year's and um, the outcome of those items, and then discusses um, their goals and projects for the next year. Um, Sue did send comments, and, you know, I don't know, Sue, if you want to go through your comments as we go through this?
Um, sure, it was really just a matter of not understanding how a few things were phrased, however.
Okay. Um, so, as I um, put in my memo previously, the board would um, put a priority level and a timeframe and um, you know, what the staff and board time involved and um, over the past few years, uh, I, I don't feel that that has informed on how, you know, how things move forward. Um, and the, the list is, um, has been just um, far exceeds what planning staff can even accomplish, given all of the unknown factors that start coming in, whether it would be, you know, like, um, the, the MBTA communities, you know, uh, requirement or um, different large projects, we, you know, we really don't know um, for a whole year, what type of big projects are gonna be coming in. Um, so what I tried to do this year is um, provide an update um, from last year's goals. Um, and what I did forget and will need to add is um, the two other um, bylaw amendments, which would have been the mobile food. Mobile food and um, the
Fast food.
Fast food. Um, so I will just put a brief sentence about those two, and that um, both were passed uh, at town meeting. Annually, um, the board goes through the the action items list from the Envision Concorded Plan and provides an update on, you know, where they are. And um, that will be happening probably at your next meeting. Um, so that's just, that's something that the board does annually to kind of track your progress on different things and um, you know, making sure you're on track for meeting those different action items that were established. The board met um, with the Historical Commission and Concord Public Works Commission members and CPW staff. Um, that was just on May ninth, so going through and finalizing um, you know, the, the conversation that the board had and the direction that the board gave. Uh, then I will make a request to the town manager to have the draft rules and regs reviewed by town council, and then at that point, um, you know, recommend um, there are a few, there's only been one application, but um, have um, different developers in the community and to, you know, review those draft guidelines and provide feedback before the board holds a um, legal, a, a notice public hearing on the adoption of uh, those rules and regs. As I informed the board, um, the board has, uh, was allocated funds to hire a consultant to update the subdivision rules and regs. Um, that will be a full request for proposals process, which um, uh, requires um, notification in the central register and um, you know, sealed bids and interviews and, you know, it's so, it's, it's a couple of month process. Um, and um, I'm looking to develop that RFP, uh, submit the RFP to the planning board for review, um, and then start that um, hiring process. Um, will likely, uh, so that is not something that happened this past year. The one item for um, discussion is um, the site plan rules and regs, which have not advanced, and it is after trying to advance this over the past couple of years, um, given the complexity of this and the number of staff. Um, I just do not feel that we can um, do this in-house. Uh, it's just too big of um, a project. So um, that did not move forward over the past year. And um, we still have uh, different items for the tree preservation bylaw and amendments to the rules and regs, working with the land manager. And um, the, at the last meeting, I think it was the board reviewed the um, request for quotes um, to do your parking zoning um, update, and we're still waiting to, from to see if the Sustainability Director um, has additional funds to add uh, that one additional scope item, um, so, but um, I'm I'm hopeful to hear back this week and then have the RFQ sent out um, by the end of the month. On the board's list for last year was the, you know, discussion about the FAR bylaw, which um, did, did not happen. Um, and then we have from last year, the MBTA communities zoning requirement, which last June was just on the board's radar, and um, and so we, we're now in, in full steam, you know, to move ahead for this year, so um, for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, um, have the MBTA communities requirement top of your list. Um, I think that's gonna take a significant uh, bulk of my time and the board's time. Uh, as I said, um, probably at your next meeting, you'll have your um, envision conquered action item um, matrix, and um, just to go through and update that and um, you know, see where you are with, you know, in, as far as the different items and um, the timing of those uh, within the next two to four years. We'll have the um, once town council reviews the scenic road um, draft rules and regulations, um, then it'll be working with the chair on um, scheduling the community, additional community input and um, holding the public hearing. And as I mentioned before, um, developing the request for proposals. And um, the board will re- um, be reviewing that draft RFP uh, to make sure it encompasses um, everything we need to do to update the rules and regs. And then I will um, finish working with the land manager on the revisions to the tree preservation bylaw and the rules and regs. Um, and then fit that into, uh, fit that into the schedule, um, cause you also have to hold a public hearing to adopt um, the amendments to the rules and regs, and then any changes to the bylaw will be a warrant article for the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting. Um, with the RFQ being out sent um, in June and getting a consultant on board in July. Um, I, I don't see that being a very long timeframe um, for that project. Um, so I think the board will probably um, so August, September, will probably have something in September back to begin evaluating and determining um, whether they uh, whether you want to move forward with um, you know, any recommendations that may be, you know, required for zoning bylaw amendments and warrant articles for annual, annual town meeting. And then just every year on your list are, um, just whether there's any other housekeeping items. Um, I usually touch base with the um, building commissioner and the zoning board of appeals, um, to see if there's any items that they want to, you know, discuss or per- um, pursue with the planning board or warrant articles. Um, so that is just, that's on your list. Um, the two items I moved to future projects um, would be the site plan rules and regs, if the board um, does agree to um, seek consultant funding in the FY twenty-five budget, which would be July first of next year. Um, that's the reason I put it, um, the date to be twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Um, and then I wasn't sure on whether the board wanted, how the board wanted to um, proceed with the FAR bylaw discussion. So that, that's it. Um, so Sue, I don't know if you wanted to go through your comment?
It was only that I didn't understand wh- what, what the list of things was. Um, we reviewed action items to identify timing. To identify whether the board should take the league and to assist, did we review the items to assist the board with developing a list? Or did we review the items to develop a list?
So that, the action items um, is already a list? It's that huge matrix?
Oh, I know, i- this is really a wordsmithing question. I just couldn't figure out. This was saying X and Y and Z, and I just couldn't figure out what was being conjoined with what, and I offered some but I don't even think we need to go over it in this meeting, you can just figure out what you meant to say. Yeah.
Okay.
I do have a comment on item seven, where you mentioned um, uh, housekeeping articles that could be whichever item seven it was, a different list, I think. Um, uh, that the ZBA or, or whoever else might have to bring forward. When um, I looked over the the entire zoning bylaw, I found um, a large set of things that I think could be taken up as housekeeping amendments, far too many to be taken up in any one year. Um, Linda and I have been looking through, and perhaps we could find since we have such a heavy lift this year with the MBTA communities zoning requirements. Perhaps we could identify just a small number of relatively straightforward housekeeping changes for this year, rather, but I'd hate to push them all off to a future year because it's a large number, and why not take care of some relatively straightforward ones? But it, it's full sun, right of seven, you don't need to make any changes.
Uh, any other thoughts or comments? I, I guess, um, I, I might ask you um, as well, Elizabeth, it seems like there are a couple of other large projects going through town, perhaps um, some in traffic and transportation and more generally parking, what other, you know, sort of um, other groups are looking at issues that may prompt them to want some support down the road, if not this particular year from planning, are there things that in terms of that um, sort of future lists might be? Um, you know, a wa- uh, waves coming our way?
Um, well, there'll be, you know, quite a few things where the planning board will be, you know, asked for input. Um, the Transportation Advisor Committee um, is working with um, the senior planner. And they are um, in the process of hiring a consultant to do a townwide transportation and mobility plan. Um, and the planning board will be asked to participate at different times um, in that effort. Um, then um, it is, it is likely that um, we will be seeing a comprehensive permit application come in. Um, and so the planning board will be, you know, asked by the Board of Appeals to be involved in, you know, and provide comments um, for that application. Um, what else is happening? The um, Historical Commission is in the process of hiring a consultant to do an updated historic preservation plan. So I imagine that they will ask for the planning board's input at different times as well. Uh, but, so I I mean, we can, you know, we can if, if the board wants to include, you know, and, you know, an eight, nine and ten for those, you know, three big items is just to provide support when asked to those boards and committees for those items, we can add those as well. Is that what you were, is that what you meant?
I guess, I guess I was, yeah, if there are other things that would draw our attention, um, maybe just put a an eight, sort of support, the, you know, other committees as they develop the tran- you know, transportation patient, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know that you have to make three different
Okay.
sections, just, you could add that as a uh, provide input. And anything that uh, anyone has been hearing or um, from friends, neighbors, colleagues, in terms of things that people seem particularly focused or disturbed about? Yep. Any other comments from the board? Um, could we see, s- seek public comment on this at, at this point then? Is there any um, Is there any um input for the board on um goals and and projects for the planning board from the public? Okay.
Um, so I will make all of these um amendments to the letter. I mean, to this mem- put it in a letter form from the planning board to the select board and the town manager for review at your meeting, um your next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Um, then the next item on the agenda is um planning board designee and liaison appointments. And um this year, uh based on the feedback that you all provided to Elizabeth, we um came up with a um suggested or proposed um list of designees and liaisons. Would you like me to read that out, Elizabeth, or do you wanna?
Um, no.
Put up a little table?
I can put it up.
Okay, so I think um in terms of uh, yes, community pres- preservation, the designee member would be Sue. Uh, Hanscom Field Advisory Committee, the designee would be Mark. Um, housing groups would be Abby. Climate Action Committee is Andrew. Transportation Advisory Committee, Rob. Um, I have the Select Board. And then Elizabeth would be the designee um for both the Economic Vitality Committee and the uh Minuteman Advisory Group on Interlocal Coordination.
Um, oh. Oops, sorry, wrong one. Nope.
Um, and we, um, we're looking for another member. Um, and uh the suggestion had been that uh we've had a member uh Elise liaison to the West Concord Advisory Committee, and perhaps we should have one to the twenty-two twenty-nine Main Street Advisory Task Force, but the currently uh being down a member, um hopefully, when we find um someone who would like to be a member, those would be obvious um possibilities for them to cover um any uh discussion. And I believe certainly the designees um would require board approval. Is that right? And uh ma- so maybe just the whole um uh group here, we could have a a vote on. Would that be appropriate, Elizabeth?
Sure, you is is it's like voting the slate of officers. You can vote your your slate of liaison assignments.
Right. Okay, um. Could I have a motion to approve the proposed um twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Planning Board Liaison and Designee Assignments?
I'll make such a motion.
Thank you, and could we have a second?
I'll second the most.
Okay, um. And uh roll call vote, um can we start um? Let's uh start with Sue.
I.
Mark? Andrew?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And I missed anyone and myself, Linda, yes. Thank you. All. And um our next item is Registry and Land Court Signatory Pages.
Uh, give me two seconds. Okay. Um, I will share my screen.
Um, actually, hold on, I have a question about um designee members and all the other liaisons. How do we get on the notification lists for our uh given committees? Do we reach out to the chair, or does staff take care of that for us?
We will, we will definitely take care of that tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so every year, um as allowed by the state subdivision control law, the planning board is able to authorize um various um individuals to sign on behalf of the board. And that would be um decisions, uh endorsement of plans, uh endorsement of um lot releases or performance guarantees. Um, and this is an annual requirement because a signature affidavit of all of the board members um and those signatories have to be sent to Land Court and the Registry of Deeds. Um, and you do this annually because the membership changes um at least in some fashion annually as long and as well as the chair, vice chair, uh clerk. Um, you know, hopefully not the town planner annually, but um, so um this is just, it's a standard housekeeping item. Um, the alternative is um if the board does have a decision or endorsement of the plan, um it does require a quorum of members to um come in and physically sign the plan, which or a decision or any lot release, so that can be sometimes challenging to do and and coordinate, so.
Okay, um, could we have a motion?
Make a motion that we um authorize a duly appointed representative to sign documents and plans on behalf of the board and submit the vote and signatures to the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds and Land Court. Authorizing the chair, the vice chair, the clerk, and the town planner to execute, certify, and endorse approval of plans presented to the board pursuant to chapter forty-one and related certificates, releases, and other instruments. And any of said persons are authorized to act alone under this authority.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, and we'll take a roll call. Um, can we start with Mark?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Sue?
I.
And myself, uh Linda Miller, yes. Okay. And our last um item uh play would be um town planner and board liaison updates. Anything, Elizabeth, that you'd like us to know that we haven't imposed on you already tonight for?
Um. Uh, if somebody else has an update, I'll go through my notes real quick.
Um, I did listen to the Select Board um meeting yesterday and relative to the um Hanscom Field issues that continues to seem to be the hot topic um in town and the I believe the sec- Select Board is moving forward perhaps to um retain counsel uh to make some determination of where they might go with that, so that's something I I don't think we're directly involved with, but informative. Um. Anything else?
Um. The only um update I have is um last week, you know, was it the last week? It was the twenty-fifth. Oh, that seems so long ago. Um, was the Legislative Breakfast for our subregion, the magic subregion. And um I did get an opportunity to uh ask the legislators legislators that were there. We had all four representatives there um and aides from um Senate Senator Eldridge and um Senator Barrett and um I was able to ask uh how, you know, what the town can do to um try and get the funding that was allocated in the transportation bond bill for our um three-town shuttle included and including the Minuteman National Park, how we can get that released so that we can use that. Um, did, you know, did did not get a, you know, a real clear answer, uh so, um but that is something that I'm gonna be following up with um uh with uh with the town manager and um, you know, how we can strategize to, you know, figure out how we can get that funding released, because um I, you know, it's gonna be critical that we have uh some good, you know, transportation options as we move forward towards twenty twenty-five, so. Um, and then the other um item that was at the Legislative Breakfast um talked about um MAPC highlighted a couple of the projects that they've been working on, and they have uh done a uh flooding research, and it was based um off of uh twenty twenty, there was, you know, we a lot of communities experienced significant flooding, and they took a lot of the um FEMA claims that households submitted and mapped those against hundred-year floodplain and found, you know, like over forty percent of the flood claims um weren't even in, you know, they weren't even in a mapped hundred-year flood zone. Um, so they are gonna be um releasing that information, and um so Delia K, the Natural Resources Director, and I um, once that information is made available, um I think they partnered with Tufts. We are gonna take a look at that and see how uh that information um, you know, presents itself in Concord and whether uh the town needs to think about additional amendments to our floodplain conservancy district. Um, but I I do have to say that um all the communities that I've talked to, when I tell them that since the late seventies, we've been requiring one and a half to one compensatory storage. Um, you know, they are all very shocked. Um, so I I'm hopeful that um Concord once again was at the cutting edge long ago. Um, and um hopefully are a little bit more resilient in that one aspect of climate change.
Great. Thank you. Well, if there are no additional comments from the board or updates, um we uh certainly will uh look forward, hopefully to seeing everyone tomorrow. Thank you for your time uh and interest tonight, and um have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.